And good evening, everyone. We are back from our short recess. We did what we could to try to rectify our YouTube issues. However, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to livestream this, and everyone will be able to watch it over the recording. So at this time, I am going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Gifford for recognition of our Director of Nutrition and Food Service staff for her wonderful Grab and Go program that happened this spring with the COVID closure. Dr. Gifford?
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Yes, I'm so happy to recognize Jean Sheridan, our Director of Nutrition and Food Service. She is here tonight to say a few words about our Grab and Go program. I don't think a few words will do it justice with the folks that started volunteering and the staff that was working. I actually visited a couple of times, and one of the last times that they were sending food off to everyone, it was a warm, warm day, and people were working so hard and the line was so long. And Sheridan came out, and I could tell she was pooped. She was pooped. So I'm going to turn it over to her, but we'd really like to thank our entire staff, everyone that worked with her to make this happen for our community. So, Ms. Sheridan?
Well, thank you, Dr. Gifford. I think the fun part for me in doing the meals, and first, we served close to 60,000 meals to the Dartmouth community, which I think is outstanding, where we were serving meals for seven days a week. And we're able to add a partnership with Lunt, who was very generous in the donations, and also the USDA Program Farms to Families. So we're serving, in addition to the meals we were serving, we were serving produce boxes. And very happily, the Council on Aging is going to continue that. So we will still be serving produce boxes every Wednesday from 11:00 to 1:00, similar to now. And last week, we had the seniors and the school families, and we had a lot of people. But I think the most important part of it was just the staff and the cooperation. I mean, the maintenance department was amazing to us. We could do the production because they did the distribution. They were taking stuff off of trucks. They were out there meeting the families. My staff that worked were great. And another big kudos to the secretaries, who were probably the third group who came in and volunteered their time. Whenever we were in trouble, you know, we knew we could call somebody and they'd be there. So I think it's a tribute to the CAF staff and the people I just mentioned. We're very happy to do it.
And I'd also like to add that she might be a little humble, but this was a huge undertaking. The number of meals that the staff and folks put out and the quality of the meals, and then the people driving up, and it really was a wonderful, wonderful moment, I think, for our community. But these folks really need to be applauded 100%.
Thank you. Thank you. It was definitely worth doing it.
You're welcome.
So before I turn it over to my other colleagues for their thoughts, I would just like to take this opportunity, Jean, to personally thank you and your staff for the job that you have done since the school closure. Like Dr. Gifford has said, and what I've heard, you know, throughout town, this was a monumental task. You know, kudos to not only you, but our maintenance workers. I know Rick, I believe Joe, Ricky, I think it was, they all had a big part to do in this, in addition to all the staff that came in and helped out to put that together and really serve the needs of our Dartmouth families. I can't say enough about, you know, the Dartmouth pride here and really stepping up for the community. So thank you.
Again, thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Jenkins?
Yeah, I'll just echo everyone's thoughts and say thank you so much. I think, you know, people think of Dartmouth as a wealthy community, and they sometimes don't realize how much need there is and the role that our schools play for the kids and their families. But kids are not free, and it's such an important lifeline for so many kids in our community. So it's really, I mean, it's great to be able to do this, but the impact that you have made in our kids and our community is amazing. And I am the committee, and I think this whole community should be grateful to all the staff that worked so hard on this. So thank you very much.
Again, thank you.
I'm calling on you, but I was muted. Dr. Karafotis?
Oh, all right. Thank you. We still have tonight, Chris, so.
We still have tonight, Carol.
Right. I want to also echo what everyone has said, Jean, that, you know, people don't realize how much the schools, what an important role our schools play in our community. And this is just another example of reaching out and providing for families within our community to make sure that their, you know, basic needs, as best we can do it, are addressed. I think sometimes there are so many that think we just give reading, writing, and literature, but there's so much more that goes on in a school day. And you and your staff, right from the beginning, have been outstanding. And thank you so very much for all that you've done. We really appreciate it.
Again, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just echo, if I may.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, you know, reiterate what my colleagues have said, that it's something to be proud of, incredible effort that you put forth with volunteers to put this, you know, on, and how many meals you were able to get out to our community. So just thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'm not sure if Mr. Nunes is going to try here. I know his internet's been...
I don't think he could hear us, but I'm sure if he could hear us, he would definitely be adding his thanks. I don't want...
And he's been over to visit also.
But it's not like he's not thanking you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so once again, Jean, thank you so much for everything that you've done for the district. Please pass our congratulations on and our thanks on to the rest of the team.
Will do.
And Mr. Nunes says, "Great job by everyone." All right, so thank you. Jean, you're welcome to stay on with us.
But thank you for the kind invite, but I'm going swimming. Take care.
Take care. Be well, Jean. Next up on tonight's agenda is a request for the Dartmouth High School marching band in Cullagard to operate the food concession at the Dartmouth Living Memorial Stadium for the 2020 football season. Dr. Gifford?
Well, I'm hopefully recommending something that's going to happen. So, you know, again, we continue to receive updates about sports, et cetera, which will keep everyone informed. But if we can go ahead and approve this in anticipation of that happening, we'd be appreciative.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
Second.
So I have a motion on the floor by Dr. Jenkins, a second by Ms. Amaral. On the motion, any other discussion? Chair hearing none. Roll call vote. Kate, please.
Chris Oliver?
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins?
Yes.
Carol Karafotis?
Yes.
Kathleen Amaral?
Yes.
John Nunes? We've lost Mr. Nunes for a while. I'm sure he would vote yes, but he's had to drop.
So we'll leave it at four. The motion passes four to zero. Just been a very awkward night tonight.
Yeah.
Next up, under Old Business, update on our summer maintenance projects. Mr. Kylie, please.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. So, you know, I'm very pleased to report that at town meeting on Saturday, we were successful in funding our capital improvement requests that were on that warrant. So that means we've got to get busy and try and make these things happen. Obviously, this is a little later than we normally would have town meeting, and we also have the issue of supply chain problems with what we're going to be ordering. So the things that are relating to that meeting, Mr. Galishaw will be focusing on some security camera improvements for all the schools. We had bleacher replacement for the middle school and the Quinn School. We've already been in contact with our vendor this morning for that, or the state contract vendor, and have that in the works. We had prepared for this. So we think that while we would be unlikely that we'd have them in in August, but we will have them in early in the school year. We're also proceeding today to, in conjunction with Green Communities and our utility, to work on the middle school boiler energy efficient project. So similar to what we did over at the high school a few years ago, we've got a big plan in place as to making that building more efficient. So it'll result in substantial savings, heating savings, for us moving forward. So we've got design work already going on that. We also had approved at town meeting art equipment replacement at the high school, and Rick and his team have that in the works. There was some discussion at town meeting regarding that, but fortunately, it was approved and will be replacing that aging equipment. So the other items on the list, I think I mentioned most of the other items last time. So big projects for us are refurbishing the high school, refurbishing middle school classrooms, rather, nine rooms, doing the lighting, replacing it with energy efficient lighting, flooring, painting, ceilings, really making those nice new spaces. We've been working on locker renovations, and are sort of almost wrapping up that work that's come out nice. And we have a whole bunch of other projects that you have listed there, that in addition to our normal routine maintenance, we are down staff in maintenance, and we also don't have our part-time lawn mowing help. So we're going to have a really busy summer, but we'll do the best we can and get ready for the start of school.
Thank you, Mr. Kylie, for that update. I'll turn it over to any of my colleagues for comments or questions. Dr. Jenkins?
So I just want to follow up. You know, I think some of us have heard some questions, and I know that you're working on it now, but about sort of the lawn mowing and the upkeep of schools. I know people have heard, maybe this might be a good opportunity to sort of provide some context for, you know, what sort of happened. I know you've updated the committee, but since the public have been asking about it, maybe it might be a good time to that. And then as a follow-up, do we not have the part-time lawn because of the hiring freeze? Or what sort of, why is that? You may explain that, but I wasn't here. Sorry.
Yeah, hiring freeze and our inability to get staff in, our existing folks who we've had previously weren't available, they had found other opportunities. So, yeah, we've yet to identify anyone who we could bring in, and certainly the hiring freeze.
Yeah, they're large lazy teenage boys if you want them. I may even give you free at this point, and I know Kathleen was saying, you're frustrated. Make them free.
Yeah, they've got to be over 18, so, but to operate the equipment and drive the equipment. But, yeah, we, you know, we're hopeful that we will have a good summer and that, you know, that we can get as much done as possible. It definitely is going to be an entirely different summer, and we're anticipating when the guidance, when we get further guidance regarding what school's going to look like in September, that that's going to also have to be an area of focus, that other things are going to have to be deferred. So it's going to be a challenge.
Absolutely. I'd just like to add, Jim, this, to me, looking at your maintenance schedule, looks like a typical, you know, year for the maintenance staff and the list of things that you have going on this year. So I hope you can get to them all. It's a very ambitious list, considering you're down staff. In addition to, we do not know what COVID-19 is going to look like in the fall and what it's going to do to our schools and what our schools are going to look like. So I myself would be completely, you know, understanding if, you know, some of these things you didn't get to due to the fact of trying to reorganize the schools and, you know, put up certain areas, whatever it may be, due to COVID. So definitely a unique summer, and I wish you and your team the best of luck.
Thank you.
So I guess that's it. Thank you very much, Mr. Kylie, for your update.
Thank you.
Next up, this is an agenda item that I asked Kate and Dr. Gifford to put on the agenda, kind of as for the time being, for the next, you know, X amount of months, a standing item regarding matters related to COVID-19. I think it's important, as Dr. Gifford is getting weekly updates from the Commissioner's office, in addition to other governmental entities, that I think it's important that, you know, we as a committee, I get the information, the most up-to-date information from Dr. Gifford, and also it gives us the opportunity to ask questions around this very important matter, in addition to, you know, let the community know that, how this committee and administration is dealing with COVID-19. So I'll turn this over to Dr. Gifford for your thoughts.
Sure. So this week, it'll be a very, kind of, very high-level, I guess, update. We did meet with the Commissioner last week. We had two meetings, one with just a group of superintendents to kind of give an update on what he was thinking, and then one with the general group of folks, which numbers in the hundreds at that point, people listening in. So he gave us, again, an idea of what he was thinking about various models of education, if you will. We are at this point waiting for the Governor's message this week, and I'm not sure what time, or we haven't heard that announcement yet, but I think this message, I'm sure the Commissioner has been in contact with the Governor, and they're working very closely with health organizations, et cetera, to produce the guidance that we're going to be receiving. So my understanding is that we will get a draft guidance very, very shortly, and with that, it'll be various models of education, such as all the way from, we just go back, full return, to the middle of some kind of a hybrid model, to some kind of almost all remote again, all the way to the end of the spectrum. Once we receive that guidance, as I said, very, very shortly, our plan will be a couple of things, because as you know, it will include thoughts about transportation, how do we set up our buildings and our classrooms to accommodate whatever parameters they put in place? And the Commissioner has been very emphatic that that will be completely aligned to health regulations, although that could change at any moment, as we know, depending on what's happening. So, but what we're going to do is, once we receive this guidance, as I said, coming very shortly, we will set up various, I guess, task force, if you will, to develop plans for, I would anticipate, three models of education, so that we can have in place what that might look like. With that said, we also want to send a survey to our community, our parents, with a summary of what things could look like, to get their sense and their feeling of, are they planning on sending their children back to school? Are they planning on transporting, et cetera? We really want to get, again, it could change at any moment, but at least a generalization of what that might look like. As you know, all of this is just not about education itself, the platform we're using, how we're going to ramp up the rigor of our curriculum and our teaching and learning, the feedback that we're giving kids and the assessments, but also, what do our buildings look like? What does our nursing look like? What does our transportation look like? What do we do, which is one of the things the Commissioner mentioned, that we're hoping to get parameters or thresholds, what happens when a student or a staff member tests positive and they've been in a classroom? So tonight, it's pretty much still very uncertain, but we do, in our heads at least, have plans of how we're going to proceed once we get that guidance, at least in hand, so that we can move forward within those parameters that were given. And we'll continue to obviously keep everyone up to date as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Dr. Gifford. Questions from my colleagues? Dr. Jenkins?
So I want to just sort of bring up the issue of transportation, because we don't know what it's going to look like, but this also came up at town meeting. And I think some of the comments at town meeting, I tried to correct them, but I think they were sort of inaccurate descriptions of what our busing service like, at least from my experience. I have yet to see an empty bus circulating by my, in our area of the community. And so I wonder if, I know it's kind of COVID-related, but maybe, Mr. Kylie, if you could, or if you want to wait till next meeting, maybe address those comments? What does the capacity on our buses look like? I really do not think we have, I think you're pretty much on it. I do think it's important for us to address that, because I suspect that if our buses are really at full capacity, we're going to have a really big problem social distancing kids on the bus. So I think it kind of ties in nicely with what happened there and here, and I'm wondering if you might give us a little information on that, please.
I'd be happy to. So I think that transportation is going to be a major challenge. We do not have capacity on our buses to socially distance to any significant degree. So, you know, if we're doing every other row or, you know, zigzag alternating rows on the bus, that's not going to work. There's several issues with it. We would need more buses. We cannot legally add the number of buses that we would need to our contract without going out to bid again. We would not be able to find buses. So, I mean, there's, the question, and Dr. Gifford alluded to, you know, the opportunity for us to engage with the community and try and determine what folks are going to want to do in terms of getting their kids to school or sending their kids to school at all. That's going to be an important question. We don't have empty buses. We have buses occasionally in the high school and middle school with buses that go to the far ends of town have some additional space on the bus. Adding kids to those buses means a ride that's already an hour is going to become an hour and a half. So we intentionally have low ridership on some of our buses that go to the far points in town, particularly at the high school and middle school level. But the elementary enrollment and the elementary ridership is what really drives the number of buses we have. We have 31 buses, and we have a good number of students on those buses. So doubling the number of buses is not going to be an option for us. We're not going to find drivers. We're not going to find vehicles. So it's, the social distancing rules that are to come are going to be a key factor in what we're going to be able to do in terms of providing education moving forward.
And this is not a unique problem to Dartmouth with the transportation?
It is not. Everyone, regardless of the size of your fleet, whether you own buses or you contract out, even the large national bus providers are not going to be able to provide double the number of buses. So that's, it's a major concern. We'll see how the regulations develop, and, you know, we'll certainly adjust our practice to keep people safe, but there will be implications that will impact what we can do for the community.
Dr. Jenkins?
I just want to follow up and then just reiterate a point that you made, Mr. Kylie, that I think sometimes people forget. We're one of the five biggest, in terms of landmass, communities in the Commonwealth, which means for some of our students who live in the particular, the far north end of town, it is a long bus ride to get to school. Those kids, I think some of the earliest pickups are around 6:20, 6:30 in the morning, right? And so, yes, maybe that's what that town meeting was talking about, maybe they live out there, but I would strongly oppose, and I think everyone here would, making those kids get up earlier, right? In my mind, 6:20 and 6:30 is already way too early. And so to make those buses fuller, we would have to have them get up even earlier, and that's not right or just. So most of our buses, I just really want to point this out, don't have capacity. The few that do is because we have made a choice about what's right for our students, and we might save a little bit of money, maybe you might be able to get rid of like one lot of 31, but at that same point in time, you're going to make it hard for a number of students. So thank you for that, but I just really wanted to clarify that, because that came up at town meeting, and I don't want people to think that we're running lots of buses that are nearly empty, and kids will be able to just, you know, social distance. Because I know my kids, I think, sat like three to a seat every row in elementary school, and so we just don't have that, and people need to be aware that that's going to be a real cost and challenge for us. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Anyone else? Dr. Gifford?
I just wanted to add also, Dartmouth Public Schools is really accommodating to parents. We are not, I know Mr. Kylie will agree, the number of stops that we make, the adjustments to stops, to help parents with, my child's going to grandma's on Tuesday and cousin, you know, cousin's house on Wednesday, or whatever it might be. So the service that the public schools is offering is tremendous. It's not just pickup every, which I've been in districts where it is strictly one stop, one stop. So Mr. Kylie and the crew that work on this are very accommodating. So that's just another huge service that the district offers.
No, I would agree, Dr. Gifford. Thank you very much for that. Mr. Nunes, are you back?
Yeah, I'm back. I ended up having to go all the way out and come all the way back in, but I'm back. Thank you.
It was a long journey.
Tell me about it. Seriously, I mean, if you talk about the transportation and such, you're also going to be talking about, in my opinion, an absolute nightmare at the schools with parent drop-offs and pickups. I mean, where I live, I see people at the Quinn School at 10 minutes past 2:00 already in line waiting to pick up their students, or at the middle school at 10 minutes past 1:00, you know, already in the queue to pick up students, and, you know, lines going however far type of deal. And I think if we're not going to be, you know, be able to transport everybody, or, you know, fewer kids on a bus, I think we're going to drive that transfer, the parent pickup and drop-off even worse than what it already is. Just my thoughts.
No, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nunes. This is Amaral.
I appreciate Dr. Gifford in saying, you know, really need to start by engaging the families to see what their plans are, what their thoughts are, because it's, I can imagine that there'll be lots of people on both sides, you know, just logistically, too, the buses, but I worry about, you know, the masks and the social distancing in the classroom and those students who really, the ability to access masks potentially, that where we could see the mouth, you know, for the hearing impaired, or for children who really rely on, or early learners, or those with disabilities who rely on that, seeing that articulation and reading lips, and be able to understand how the mouth needs to work in order to form certain sounds, and so much to think about. how the mouth needs to work in order to form certain sounds, and so much to think about. But it's really important, and I appreciate that, the effort to outreach to families to see what their thoughts are and their plans are, and their ability to drive their children to school. So thank you for keeping us updated.
Thank you, Kathleen. Yeah, no, I agree. I think this is a really important, obviously huge, topic that we need to continue to discuss at each meeting, and actually, you know, I know that's coming up on the agenda, the proposed meeting schedule, and I'd love to see even another, another school committee meeting thrown in there in July, with the only topic being COVID-19, just as an update, because I truly do believe that this is an extremely important topic, and I personally, and I'm sure many of my committee members will agree, that we really want to be up to date on what's the latest information and how we're communing it out to our families and to our community, the Dartmouth community. So, no, I thank you, Dr. Gifford, for you and your team for continuing to turn this out, and yeah, let's, I agree, it's better to over-communicate with parents, with families, let's get surveys out there. Can someone, can everyone still hear me? Because you are all frozen right now. Hello?
We can hear you, but you are frozen.
All right.
I can hear you, Chris.
You can hear me? All right, yeah, all of a sudden, everyone just froze. So thank you, everyone, for your comments, and thank you, Dr. Gifford. Next up is our proposed school committee meeting date. So in your packets that Kate sent out, you should have received the proposed summer dates. Does anyone have any concerns or questions with those proposed dates? Yes, Dr. Jenkins?
I share your concern that, you know, if the superintendent, I'm sorry, the Governor and Dussie's guidance is coming out this week, that we're not really scheduled to meet for another three weeks, and only once in July, I think there's a lot going on, and I think maybe we need to sort of shoehorn another meeting in somehow.
I would absolutely agree with you. I think it's important. I know, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Gifford, but isn't there a press announcement tomorrow afternoon with the Governor and the Commissioner?
I'm expecting something tomorrow, yes. I'm not quite sure what's mine, but something.
Yeah, I believe it's a public press conference that'll be available. So I'm not sure what the committee's pleasure is, if we want to look at the week of the 6th, though the week of the 29th, I'm open. Like I said, I just think it's important that we continue to meet as a committee to discuss these plans moving forward. Any other thoughts?
John, Chris?
Yes, I can't see you, but I can hear you. Go ahead, John.
Thanks. I mean, I'm wide open, in all services, I'm wide open, but, you know, the question becomes in all services, what is central off, you know, again, it's summertime, people have got vacation plans scheduled, so who's got what and who's available? I mean, I'm available across the board, I'm not like 99% of everybody else, unless, you know, something opens up, you know, maybe I get to go to someplace, but that's not too far on the agenda, so I'm around, but what's everybody else got for vacation plans?
Yeah, so, all right, so...
What's that, vacation?
Seriously.
Oh, it sounds, it's in the dictionary, you know? It's...
Then why don't we do this? Why don't we say that I'll have a conversation with Dr. Gifford, maybe later on this week, early next week, and we can put something together for everyone?
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Is everyone okay with all the other dates?
Yes.
Question.
Yes.
Are we going to meet at the high school, or for argumentative sake, are we meeting at the high school, or are we just going to continue with Zoom for the summer?
Let's, I'll talk to Mr. Oliver about that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'd be open. The other thing is, we were, as a reminder, we were looking at the school, the summer meetings to be at 4:00, as we've done in the past, 4 o'clock.
That's fine, I'm good with those.
That's fine.
Okay. So we can update folks as to venue, how we're going to proceed, what people feel comfortable with.
Yeah. Wherever, whatever, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Dr. Gifford, superintendent's update?
Oh, boy. Okay, a few things tonight, other than the COVID, obviously. I just wanted to let you know that we, despite COVID and everything else, our summer institute kicked off and is slowly coming to an end. That's when our teachers come together, so they've been working virtually to plan curriculum. And one thing that we've really noticed is, this whole remote learning, I think shifted people's thinking even more to a very positive thing, like we were working on Highlander Institute for so long, about project-based learning, flipped classrooms, and now they have venues, and they've gotten their training, and they feel comfortable with that. So teachers were really into creating curriculum and units and lessons that really incorporate all of this kind of teaching and learning that we've been looking at. So that's, we've had 63 folks that worked together and collaborated to work on our summer institute, so that was awesome. Extended school year is starting July 6th, that's going to be virtual this year, and the signups are still continuing for that. And we've also planned, I remember, if you remember, I let you know that we received a financial literacy grant a few months back, and then everything was on hold because of the closure, but planning has been completed to be able to now train the teachers that will be working in the PACE block at the high school, so that all juniors will be exposed to a curriculum around financial literacy. And pretty much that's it, other than, again, working on the closure and trying to keep up with things. I know Mr. Kylie has a lot more that he's working on with budgets and things, but curriculum instruction, that's pretty much what's going on right now.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gifford, I appreciate that. Next up, I believe, is the four of the chair, and just a couple of things that I have. First off, which I'd like to do is add to the next meeting's agenda, a couple of resolutions to take up for consideration that MASC has sent out, and I'll send it for those members, those are my colleagues that did not receive it in the email, I can send it to you. The two resolutions are around COVID-19 expenses and the response to social, economic, and racial justice in our communities. So I'd like you to, if you have the opportunity, to take a look over those resolutions before our next meeting, so we can take that up for consideration, so we can send that off to our state representatives and everyone up at the State House. And then, last but not least, I think it's important to note that tonight is Dr. Karafotis' last meeting with us. We had her for an extended period of time, a few extra months, and I'd just like to say that it's been a pleasure, Carol, having you on the committee. I've learned a lot from you. I think this is really bittersweet. If I, I did a little bit of research, I'm not sure how accurate my, how accurate my numbers are, but I believe that you're somewhere in the ballpark of 38 years in the district as a educator principal. Does that sound correct? You are muted. All right, nice, well, I have to thank Kate for that. I had Kate dig up some numbers for me. So 38 years in the district, and what a mark you have left, you know, even with you as an educator and as a principal, so I can't say enough. And now you're, this is your second term, you're just finishing your second term on school committee, and, you know, you have definitely given your heart and soul into this position, and what experience you have brought, Carol. What a great amount of experience that you have brought to this committee from your time working for the Dartmouth Public Schools. So I thank you, I learned a lot from you. I think you came in at a time where we really needed someone of your caliber, and you were just the fit. So thank you, and I'm going to turn it over to any of my colleagues, if they would like to say, say a few words, and hopefully, once this whole COVID thing is over, maybe we can invite you back to a meeting to have some cake.
Oh, sounds good.
Dr. Jenkins?
Although, even though Dr. Karafotis is retiring, she can't fully retire, because once she agreed to step down from here, she immediately volunteered to serve on the Dartmouth Education Foundation Board.
All right.
And stopped being a supporter of the Dartmouth Public Schools. And I know the DEF is so grateful to have her voice and her expertise on that board, I'm sure she will provide as much of a positive input there as she has here. It's been so great working with you, Carol, and we will all miss you. I will also take this opportunity to remind everyone that town election is tomorrow, I almost even forgot about that. This all reminds me, maybe it's a reminder to everyone else. We'll be sad to see you go, but we are so grateful for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Anyone else? Yes, Kathleen?
I just want to offer, you know, just so grateful to have been able to sit on this committee and learn from you, and just incredible honor to know you, and appreciate the fact that you'll be stepping in on that board and really supporting the school department from a different venue, but I hope you enjoy some free time with your grandkids, and, but I've appreciated serving with you here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah. Carol, thank you very much for your time on the board, I appreciate everything, and I can go back to when you were an administrator, you know, at Gidley School, and then Quinn, and then over to Otter School, and it's always been a pleasure, it was, your door was always open for me, as a school committee member, to come in and ask you questions on the budgets, or just take a walk around and see how the things were going, and put on the committee as someone said, a breath of fresh air, and your experience and knowledge was second to none, and I for one greatly appreciate it, and wish you nothing but much happiness and enjoyment.
Thank you. I put something on my school committee page today, indicating that I loved working in Dartmouth, and I'm going to miss everything, but thank you, thank you so much.
You're one of a kind, Carol.
Thank God. That's what my husband would have said. But thank you, I loved working with each and every one of you, I feel like I've learned so much, you know, just listening to each of you as you present your thoughts on what's happening in education, and I think you're, it's a great committee, and I'm sure Mary Waite's going to add, be an excellent addition to the committee. So please get out and vote tomorrow.
That's right, thank you. Yes, I'm very proud of what we've done together. So that being said, any other members have anything to add? Okay, at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purposes of, for strategy with respect to individual personnel contracts not to return to open session.
So moved.
I'll second that.
So I got a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Dr. Karafotis. On the motion, any discussion? Roll call, vote, please, Kate?
Chris Oliver?
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins?
Yes.
Carol Karafotis?
Yes.
Kathleen Amaral?
Yes.
John Nunes?
Yes. This meeting has been adjourned. Thank you, everyone, we'll see you on the executive session, and Bonnie, either myself or Kate, will shoot you a text.